Good evening. This regular meeting of November 13th, 2023, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Bradley?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Prohaska?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Sancy?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
Okay, we'd like to welcome some students to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Say your names. I'm going to introduce.
Hi, I'm Angela and I'm a sixth grader at Roosevelt Middle School.
Hi, my name's Otis and I'm a sixth grader at Roosevelt Middle School.
Hi, my name is Wes. You can call me Wesley. I go to Roosevelt Middle School.
Hi, my name is Avery and I am a sixth grader at Roosevelt Middle School.
Hi, I'm Morgan and I'm a sixth grader at Roosevelt Middle School.
My name is Elliot. I'm a sixth grader at Roosevelt Middle School.
I.
I.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on October 9th and the strategic planning updating session on October 23rd, 2023, as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on October 9th and the strategic plan update session on October 23rd, 2023, as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, that brings us to some board salutes, and I believe there's quite a few out there. We can start with you, Ms. Ryan.
A board salute goes out to the cast of Hempstead High School's production of The Lion, the Witch and the Wardrobe, and Dubuque Senior High School's production of Beauty and the Beast, both which took stage in the last few weeks. From start to finish, these productions were extremely well-done and represented the outstanding performance skills and artistry of our students. When you think of all the well-recognized arts community in Dubuque, it's wonderful to be able to include our outstanding high school performers in the category with the high-caliber productions they offer. They're one of the best sets of actors you will find in the city of Dubuque. I know that firsthand. So kudos to all of our student performers, as well as the students and staff behind the scenes, making it all possible on a job very well-done.
And I have one. A board salute goes out to the Protectors Law Enforcement Motorcycle Club of the Dubuque Chapter for their amazing donation of winter gears for children in need. On November 8th, I had the privilege of walking down the stairs and seeing a group of men and a small baby, providing a variety of just winter items for all of our children in the elementary schools, and we had some of our elementary counselors here to receive all of those items. So, big kudos and thankful for all of those guys and the baby who provided gears to our children in need.
And I have a board salute. Our cross-country has come to an end this season, and so has swimming for the women. So, we have a board salute going to the girls' cross-country teams for their outstanding achievements at the state cross-country meet. Congratulations to Dubuque Senior High Team, which finished fifth, and Hempstead High School Team, which finished sixth. Individual congratulations to the following state place finishers. They were on the podium. Keely Lightson from Hempstead High School finished third. Leah Klapatowskis from Senior High School finished 10th, and Julia Guile from Hempstead finished 11th place. Also, at the athletics front, congratulations goes to the swimmers for Dubuque Senior and Hempstead, who qualified to compete in 16 events in the girls' swimming and diving competition. At the event, Dubuque Senior High, Amy Gilligan, Annie, I'm sorry, Annie Gilligan hit the podium twice, finishing third in the 100-yard backstroke and sixth in the 50-yard freestyle. Annie is a freshman, so quite an outstanding athlete. Congratulations to these students and a job well-done.
A board salute goes to all the staff members and volunteers who worked tirelessly in preparation for last week's bond vote. While we are greatly disappointed by the results, we are committed to listening and learning as we recap and develop a plan moving forward, focusing on finding necessary operating budget savings while always putting our students at the forefront of our decisions. A sincere thank you to all involved in the bond effort.
Any other board salutes? Brian Howes, would you like to come up?
It is my pleasure to introduce Cassie McDonald, who is the Dubuque 2023 Teacher of the Year. If you stop by Senior High School at any time, you will probably not find Cassie alone, whether it's in her classroom, in the hallway, in the office. She has a magnetic pull where students are always around her. You spend some time in her classroom, you will hear multiple languages being spoken, see many things happening all at once, and undoubtedly you will hear Cassie say, "You can do this," many, many times. It's hard to put into words the positive impact she has at Senior and the district as a whole, but there are some of the words that our students and colleagues use to describe her: patient, compassionate, respectful, resolute, passionate, empathetic, and what I think is the best way to describe her is a tireless advocate for her students. Cassie is an amazing asset to our school and the district, and I think she is a perfect representative of the great teachers we have in this district. So, congratulations to the 2023 Dubuque Teacher of the Year, Cassie McDonald. Cassie, come on up.
Thank you so much for welcoming me this evening. I'm so lucky, I say this all the time, I'm truly so lucky to love what I do each and every day, and that's because of both the students that I work with as an ELL multilingual teacher for our district, and also because I work with so many amazing educators and staff in our school district. My foundation's in education, go back to doing all of my pre-service teaching and early years of teaching here in Dubuque, learning from teachers in our district. I was so incredibly humbled to be chosen, it was quite the spring way to end the year last year, I was so humbled to be chosen for this award, and I'm just so thankful for being part of our wonderful ELL team that just works so tirelessly each and every day, working to continue to move things ahead. My students have always driven me to work harder, to find engaging ways to approach teaching, and to dig in deep, pushing forward with what is best for students. I am lucky to go to school each day, working with our multilingual students, and celebrating the many assets that they bring to our district, the richness of culture that they bring to our district, and into our community. And I just can't thank you enough for this recognition, and to all those who work each day to make our district a stronger place. So, thank you just so very much.
I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. To start us off, I believe we have some folks from Roosevelt Middle School to tell us what's going well at Roosevelt.
My name is Mark Lawler. I'm one of the assistant principals at Roosevelt. Bobby Jones is our other assistant principal. Jeff Joel is our principal, who wanted to be here tonight to share this, but he is unable to be here. We think several things are going well at Roosevelt. One big category is our students' engagement in school and in the community. We've had a large number of students go out for sports and the many activities that we have going on right now. We're excited that the Foundation for Dubuque Public Schools has granted us a grant to start our LEAP after-school activities, so more students will be joining with those. We had our second annual pumpkin sale that was open to the community. We helped one of our partners, Hy-Vee, serve breakfast to the veterans on Friday for Veterans' Day, and we have a student who had a medical, in our building, who had a medical emergency, and our staff and students has rallied around and were selling bracelets to raise funds to support her and her family, and so, just a lot of great things that the students and staff are doing to rally around each other.
Some other things that we've been focusing on this year is we've implemented circles, which is a restorative practice with our students. So, once a week, at least once a week, we have our staff work with students, and this has been really engaging for students. They've really come around and have found like their voice, they have found, staff has found that they're talking more, that they're engaging with each other. This has been a great, we've gotten positive feedback from staff and students around this, and it just continues to get better and better. We put a lot of PD around it, really supported teachers in this effort, and it's really starting to pay off with our students and our staff. And again, we continue our work with MTSS and RTI. This year, we're focusing pretty heavy on social and academic behaviors, just instilling those in our students, seeing what our students know, how we can continue to make them successful both at school and in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carl Bobis from the Boy Scouts of America.
Well, thank you for giving me an opportunity to give an update on scouting. My name is Carl Bobis, and I'm the CEO for the Northeast Iowa Council Boy Scouts, and I'm also a proud parent of two boys. One is here today, that you saw giving the pledge, and another one is at Carver. I also have with me my staff member, Michaela Freyberger, and board member Bruce Hallahan. So, in scouting, our mission is to prepare young people for life, and we do that through character education and leadership development, citizenship training, and a focus on personal fitness. I really see scouting as an extension of the classroom. We're teaching important life skills like leadership skills, working with a group, which isn't always the easiest thing to do, overcoming challenges, and an appreciation for the outdoors, especially with our emphasis on increased mental health. I do want to share some amazing things that the students of the district are doing, our young men and women. In your packet, you have a snapshot of scouting in our area. In the Dubuque Community School District, over 400 youth, K-12, are part of 19 individual scouting programs, and of those, 115 are young women, who are, we are very proud of that, and we continue to grow and reach that segment of our population. Another thing we're known for is community service. You may have heard of our scouting food drive, and last year, we collected 18 tons of food for the needy. Numerous Eagle Scout projects, I think there's a gaga ball pit at every elementary school. The last one is Table Mound, and we're working on that, so, very popular. And then, a few other projects that we've done for the schools: PVC displays at Lincoln, shade trees at Irving, an outdoor classroom at Sageville, butterfly gardens at Audubon, and most recently, a frisbee golf course at Roosevelt. Over the past seven years, 225 young people have done service, and the value is over half a million dollars to the community, and they've let other scouts and adults for 28,000 community service hours back to the community. That is just incredible. Scouting locally is also very intentionally inclusive, and we do that through our welcoming girls into the program, making scouting accessible for youth of all ability levels, and we have programs for an additional 200 youth in our Title I schools. This is something that's very near and dear to my heart, and something we were able to get back going this year, is we partnered with the Boys and Girls Club and St. Mark's Youth in Richmond, and we were both thrilled that we're able to provide scouting where it really was not possible before. We were able to take them out to our camp, and just to see their eyes light up this summer was awesome. So, with that, thank you so much for your time. We look forward to our community collaborations and partnering with the school district and how we can best serve our youth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the board may do so at this time? We ask that you come to the podium, state your full name, your connection to the district, and that you limit your remarks to three minutes using the timer.
Hello, my name is Roseanne Schromann. Address?
Just your connection to the district.
Taxpayer. I don't know what else to say. Former teacher in Dubuque. The bond referendum went down, and I'm here to talk about how to maybe do something different with that, because I already get the feeling that you're going to figure out some different angle to go at it the same way. I don't think that's the smartest thing to do. A lot of rejection came from the fact that a whole bunch of articles were put together into one issue, one referendum. So, I think it would be in your best interest to find people that would be willing to sit on a board and talk about what went wrong. Since the school bond elections are now on the same cycle as elections, there's no more December ones or the middle of January ones, so that can be done in such a way that this can be broken into steps and not such a big amount of money. There were, from what I can see, three vote no signs in Dubuque, and hundreds of vote yes signs. I think the city, the population, became very intimidated by all the vote yes signs. I heard a lot of people saying, "What's the use? It's going to probably pass anyway because of all that." The population has a right to speak about what they want to do. I attended the meeting at Marshall, and thank goodness, there was someone there other than me, who at the end of the presentation, he basically said, "This seemed like a sales pitch." And when we were asked to go into small groups and talk to individual people, like the architect or somebody else, he questioned that and said, "I think we should talk as a large group." And he started asking questions, as did many of us, about what had been presented. I don't think the presentations were done with the thought that the population had any say-so. When I asked Amy Hawkins about looking forward into the population in the schools, she said, "We project five years ahead." I don't think that's probably the best way to do it anymore, since the money follows the kid. Comm Kills is adding on and doing a renovation. St. Joe's very well can open up again. Resurrection added on. There's a possibility that the competition of the Catholic schools can come back.
That's the end of your time. Thank you.
Pardon me?
Your time is up.
Wow, I paid a lot of taxes for three minutes. Thank you.
Everyone gets three minutes.
Seeing none, I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any item a board member wishes to have pulled? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries as well. So, that brings us to our Facilities and Support Services Committee report from Mr. Prohaska.
Thank you very much. Our Facilities Support Services meeting met last Monday. I'll just run through some of the things that we did on the agenda, and then I will give, I'll have some motions as well. We had an update on senior high addition and renovation Phase II from Straka Johnson. Basically, the furniture's all in Phase II, package is complete, and the closing documents will come in December. We also had an update on the Eisenhower Elementary School mechanical system replacement. We had an update on the Sageville Elementary School solar project, which the solar array should be operational by the end of November. We're still waiting on alliance supplemental information. We'll be getting a kickback or rebate for setting up the solar. We also had an update on the senior high school Dalzell Field scoreboard replacement. It will be, it's on order, and it should be here December 18th. We had an update on the preschool renovation project, and the sealed bids, I believe, went out last Thursday. Anyway, Amy Hawkins offered us a tour of the building sometime, which probably we will take you up on. Just a reminder, the building was purchased with Save dollars. We had an update on the Jefferson Public Utility Easement purchase. The city of Dubuque wants to purchase a small portion of property for public utilities. We had an update on the Audubon Playground Equipment. Rob Powers presented the Audubon Playground Equipment Replacement Project, and the existing equipment will be replaced. Rob also gave us a synergistic update. Kevin gave us a report on this SBRC request for allowable growth funds, school budget review committee request. We also had an update on the ELL fund beyond five years. Then, Mr. Keller also reviewed the physical plant and equipment, or the Pebble Levy, and the SAVE funds for future planning projects. So, right now, I will make some motions here. I move that the Board of Education approve change order number 13 to Tricon Construction Company on the senior high school renovation Phase II project in the increased amount of $96,000.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number 13 to Tricon Construction Company on the senior high school renovation Phase II project in the increased amount of $96,030. Is there any discussion?
Apparently, there were some unforeseen issues in the technical building, where they had to add some ductwork and some, just move things around, the walls where supporting beams were not the place they thought they were, et cetera.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the transportation fuel system replacement project and authorize payment of final project cost to Metco in the amount of $154,355.31, in accordance with the requirement of Iowa law, and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the transportation fuel system replacement project and authorize payment of final project cost to Metco in the amount of $154,355.31, in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution. Is there any discussion?
This is involving the fuel or gas delivery system, and apparently, from Ernie, our bus drivers are very happy with the new system, and it's good to have happy bus drivers.
It is. And it's covered, right?
And it's covered, that's right, the elements.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan specifications form of contract and estimate of total cost for the Lincoln Elementary School Playground Project and set the date, time, and location of public hearing as January 2nd, 2024, at 4:30 p.m. at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan specifications form of contract and estimate of total cost for the Lincoln Elementary School Playground Project and set the date, time, and location of public hearing as January 2nd, 2024, at 4:30 p.m. at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to remind everyone that this is a, we are in partnership with the city on this, and so, there have been a few hoops we had to go through before we did have the project fully finalized.
You're welcome.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete on the Sageville Elementary School Culvert Replacement Project in the increased amount of $2,065.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete on the Sageville Elementary School Culvert Replacement Project in the increased amount of $2,065. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Sageville Elementary School Culvert Replacement Project and authorize payment of final project cost to Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete in the amount of $267,883.75, in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law, as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Sageville Elementary School Culvert Replacement Project and authorize payment of final project cost to Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete in the amount of $267,883.75, in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution. Is there any discussion? I would just say, I think Sageville's very happy this is finished, because with the white, nice weather this week, they'll be outside, and they've gotten their playground back, so that's been great.
And the grass has probably started to grow.
Yeah, the grass is starting to grow, so that's a good thing.
Good, great.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Prohaska.
You're welcome.
That brings us to the Educational Programs and Policy Committee report from Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Dr. Price. We, the Educational Programs and Policy Committee met last Tuesday, November 7th, and the policies that we talked about but for one have already been approved on the consent agenda, and we'll come back to another one under new business, actually, under ed programs, and that is the graduation requirements. We heard a report from Mark Burns, Executive Director of Secondary Education, and from both Mr. Howes, Principal of Senior, Dubuque Senior High School, from Ms. Jorgensen, the Principal of Hempstead High School, and their two associate/registrar, registrars, Jared Deutsch and Joan Schuler, they represented the work of a large committee that's been worked for quite some time to really consider, where have we been with our graduation requirements, both number and content, and where do we want to be? What is the next look of that going to be? Districts around the state, around the country, really, are reviewing their graduation requirements and really looking at what today's education ought to have as expectations for graduation requirements. So... So as Mr. Burns shared with us, four recommendations came from the committee that had been at work on this. And they were first to expand the VERTEX initiatives regarding college and career readiness. That gets into career pathways. It gets into internships. And I'm looking at Elizabeth Kelsey's excellent report that she gave in the Telegraph Herald. The VERTEX really gets us into apprenticeships, internships, classes offering college credits, and a whole expanded array of course sequences leading to career outcomes after high school. And the second thing that the committee wanted us to take a look at is creating a new ninth-grade seminar class. Most of us have gone from a junior high or middle school setting and need to make the adjustment to a high school setting. And this course, which has been of interest for some time, now is being created to start next year, and it looks at helping students make that transition into the high school setting. So it will take a look at a whole host of things that will support our students as they enter the high school world in ninth grade. Thirdly, to adjust the credits required to graduate to align with other northeastern Iowa schools. And fourth, to allow students more choice in electives. So that brought us to a consideration of Policy 6210, graduation requirements, and the revision of that policy, which I'll have a motion for in a moment. As Mr. Burns and the others explained, the recommendation is to go from 46 to 42 credit requirements by removing the requirement of two fine arts credits and world culture credits, and adding one financial literacy credit. And also, a change therefore to the total elective students would have, goes from 10 elective credits during their high school time to 13. So that, in a nutshell, is the recommendations that Mr. Burns and his group brought forward. I believe he'll talk more with us about that.
Yeah, Mr. Burns, would you like to come up and have some conversation?
First, it's 44 credits.
It's 44.
Forty-four.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, 46 to 44. Everybody was giving us the double force.
That's right.
You've done a nice job with that.
Ah, thank you.
So Nancy's done a great job for us. So tonight, you have a recommendation on Policy 6210, graduation requirements. It is the committee's consensus and response to the school board's priority initiative that asked us to review and possibly modify the graduation requirements to provide for more choice in our students so that they can look at career and college opportunities. Our committee of 24 was made up of teachers from each content area, school administrators, and district administration. We met six times last year, reporting in May to ed programs to see if they were in support of us developing some subcommittees. Excuse me. And those subcommittees, as Nancy talked about, worked on additional career pathways. We went from six to 13 career pathways. And then initial elements of that seminar class. I believe there are six units, six or seven units of study that are beginning to be planned out on that. So tonight, we're seeking that recommendation, approval of that recommendation to go from 46 to 44 credits and to eliminate the directed electives and allow students full choice in their, at least 13 electives that they could be taking.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So we will come back to that in a moment in the form of a motion to take action on that revised policy. Two other things from our Ed Programs and Policy Committee. One was that we were able to bring forward to the group the openings that have become, come available in the districts eight and nine of the Keystone Area Education Agency. I've been privileged to serve on that board for the past six years. And Dubuque is represented by four of the nine districts in the Area Education Agency, which represents support services to the public and private schools and districts of northeast Iowa. The state is divided into nine Area Education Agency districts. We are one of them. And Dubuque represents, Dubuque Schools represents about a third of the students that are serviced in the, by Keystone AEA. Services are many. Support services directly to students with special needs. Psychologists, social workers, speech pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, many, many, many support services. In addition, services directly to teachers of general ed and special ed. Many resource materials, instructional materials that are provided with twice-weekly delivery of books and other resources right to our schools. So Keystone provides many, many services. Two vacancies, one in District Eight. The recommendation will come forward later in our agenda to approve Jean McDonald for District Eight and Cindy Stephens to fill the vacancy in District Nine. So we talked about that. We're grateful to have these two excellent veteran educators who've provided lots of wonderful leadership in our district. And lastly, we heard from Superintendent Hawkins, who shared the proposed calendars for 2024-25 and 2025-26. This, please know that the community will have plenty of opportunity for input, and that will be available both in a site on our district website. Perhaps it is now. Is it available now?
It's there now, yep.
Okay.
It's live.
And how long will that be available? Do we know that? November 29. So, community, if you want to weigh in on the proposed calendars, you can view them at the website and give us your feedback on that. We really value that. And then lastly, there'll be a public hearing on the calendars that will take place on December 12. So that was our conversation, and I'm happy now to place a motion. Maybe that's out of order now, is it?
No.
We have the motion. I move that the Board of Education approve Policy Number 6210, graduation requirements.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Policy Number 6210, graduation requirements. Is there any further discussion?
This has been a conversation that has started 12 years ago when I first came on the board, just to make flexibility. And I am so pleased that they finally came up. As everything developed with being able to do career planning and making flexibility, that was the key, was the flexibility. And that's what people need to realize, is it allows students who are focused on something don't feel pigeonholed in a certain area that they have to take a credit that just doesn't fulfill a need for them. Or it's something that they have absolutely no interest in. So I am so thrilled that this is finally coming through. And we're not really reducing credits by that much. We're within what's the guidelines, which is around the state. So I am very grateful to see this come through.
Yeah, I'll echo that. It's an opportunity to give our students more choice and what's best for them, and ownership. And any way that we can continue to remove any barriers from preventing kids from graduating, it's a win-win for all of us. I'm super excited for this.
I'd like to chime in a little bit on that as well. Thank you to the committee. And I was impressed to see that we had a multiple different number of academic areas represented on the committee. So this wasn't just one area deciding what, you know, what, how we're going to change the requirements, et cetera. The whole idea of career pathways does give meaning to the student's education. As you, as you guys mentioned, you know, why are we here? Why am I taking this course, et cetera? It's a requirement for some potential career that I want to enter when I'm out of school, whether it be college or whether it be going in the workforce. So I too am also very happy that we finally arrived at something like this. And to me, it's a more contemporary way of secondary education.
One thing I wanted to mention, too. You notice the elimination of requirements for, or fine arts. We still offer the fine arts. It's required K through eighth grade. We will continue to offer those in high school. It's just not that it's mandatory. So the students where the fine arts do not follow their pathway gives them more flexibility to follow the classwork, coursework that will father, take them to their pathway. But fine arts is not forgotten, it's still there. Just want everyone to know that we still value the fine arts.
Any other discussion?
I did have one question, I guess I forgot to ask. When has this become effective? Like, is it for the incoming freshmen next year? Or how is that working?
Yeah, we talked about that today. If this was, were to pass tonight, then we'll talk about how we'll start that. It will definitely start with the freshman of '24. Yep. And then we'll see, you know, where that goes with the other students that are already currently in high school. And then one other thing I'd just like to add, too, is, you know, right now, 46 credits are required. We have many students that take well over 46 credits. You know, they have the opportunity to take as many classes that they can fit into their schedule. We have lots of students that take seven full classes, you know, each semester. So going down to 44 doesn't, doesn't say that somebody can't still take the 56 credits if they, if they choose to.
Oddly enough, while I placed the, made the motion to approve this policy and join certainly those of you who have thanked the group for all of their good work and so many positive changes, I believe, that this represents, I find it difficult to support the recommendations based on one factor. And that is the elimination of requirements in the areas of fine arts and world cultures. And I think, when I think of our mission statement for the district, to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive community, learning community, how can we create the kind of well-rounded students that we, I believe, have an ethical obligation to and not have fine arts as a part of the requirements? So at the same time, as we add the element of flexibility and the element of choice, individual choice, we nonetheless will have students who will not make the choice to select any of the fine arts or world cultures or world languages courses that, as you've said, continue, continue to be offered. So that concerns me as a philosophical shift in what we believe to be well, well-rounded students. I think well-rounded students are globally and culturally aware. And I think it is our job to make certain that each and all of our students have some element of that in their expected coursework. So for no other reason than that will I oppose the change. But I think that, I think that's very important.
All right, are we ready to vote?
Can she make the motion and then?
Yeah. She has to make it. You made the motion already.
I made the motion to approve.
The motion's been made.
As Chair of the Ed Programs Committee, but I can vote otherwise, yeah.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries. All right, well, thank you for that report. Thanks for the work on these graduation requirement changes that came from the committee. That does bring us next in the agenda to some new business.
I move the Board of Education approve the district emergency operations plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the district emergency operations plan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education set the date, time, and place for public hearing on proposed 2024, 2025, and the '25, '26 school calendar as December 11, 2023, at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education set the date, time, and place for public hearing on the proposed 2024, '25 and 2025, '26 school calendars as December 11, 2023, at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum. Is there any discussion?
I would just say that I gave the wrong date in my report. I said December 12, and it's obviously December 11, so my apologies.
Come to the hearing on 11. The 11th. But also, you can provide feedback for that on the website with that link. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education authorize the Board Secretary to cast ballots for Keystone Area Education Agency Board of Directors. Jean McDonald for District Eight, Cindy Stephens for District Nine.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize the Board Secretary to cast ballots for Keystone AEA Board of Directors. Jean McDonald, District Eight, and Cindy Stephens, District Nine. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 1604849826.